Good evening. I'd like to call the first meeting of 2024, January 2nd.
Louder.
Good evening and welcome to the town council meeting from January 4th, January 2nd, 2024. We are at the high school auditorium. I would ask for a roll call, please.
Councilor Bissillo. Councilor Munson.
Here.
Councilor Belcher.
Here.
Councilor Swob.
Here.
Councilor Aiello.
Here.
Councilor DeWos.
Here.
Councilor DiMarco.
Here.
Councilor Tassinari.
Here.
Vice President Luteri.
Vice President?
Oh, my goodness.
Geez.
Five minutes have been made.
Already.
All in favor, say aye.
Wow. Wow, that's a rough start.
President Luteri.
Yeah. Thank you. We all stand for a pledge led by Councilors Tassinari, Swob, and DeWos.
My goodness.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aw, man. First meeting of the year.
When you're a defense, you used to say, "Vice President."
Minutes from the December 19th meeting have been circulated for the councilors that were at that meeting.
Motion to.
Any discussion? Motion by Councilor DiMarco, second by Councilor Belcher. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstentions?
Obey.
Three abstentions. Minutes have passed. Public hearing. We have a public hearing for the appropriation of $40,000 from retained earnings in the Rink Enterprise Fund for repairs, mechanical equipment. We'll open that public hearing. Does anyone wish to be heard? So I will say that these are repairs that have already been made into the startup of the season. The vast majority of these repairs are led by a Freon leak. It's incredible how much Freon costs. But there were repairs done, compressor repairs and others. The Rink does not maintain a high budget for maintenance, so usually for anything extraordinary out of the realm of what would normally be required, they ask to go to retained earnings. And is there any other discussion on this? Seeing none? We will close the public hearing. Public comments. Yes, John.
Good evening, everybody. John Morgan, preaching for, I'd like to welcome the new councilors and just to let you know, I'll be watching you and listening and I'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Seeing none, correspondence. Denise, do we have any correspondence?
I have, I received no correspondence.
No Christmas cards, New Year wishes.
No anything, yeah.
Holiday greetings. Committee reports, we do not have. School department report, do not have. Town manager report.
Thank you. First off, Happy New Year to everybody. Looking forward to 2024 and all the work we've got in front of us. To that end, I am starting to work on the capital plan to have that ready by the deadline in the charter, so looking forward to working with the capital committee, whatever that makeup looks like. So excited for that work. This is notoriously a light week, so there isn't too too much. Plus, we are planning on, and I've talked to a few councilors about this, but having a presentation with Rachel Kelly and hopefully the vendor that did the first half of the 3A zoning report at the next meeting to give an update where we stand with that and next steps. Talk about the grant we got for the next, you know, the final, hire the next consultant to bring us to the home stretch to have that vote hopefully done by next December so we can get that passed, so. But with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Aiello.
So just a thing on the 3A zoning report. That's the MBTA housing.
Correct.
Thing. Sort of like my complaints about the TIPS project, we never called it the Rivera Street project, so.
Okay.
Half of Winthrop didn't understand what we were talking about.
Sure.
Can, just as the common language can be just from now on, I'm referring to it, call it the MBTA housing plan.
Sure.
That's what we're seeing in the media.
Yeah, I get, yeah, both, I get 3A in that one, but sure.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad you're taking the initiative on that because we're reading in the papers every day about the first set of municipalities that had to go through that process.
Right.
And wide variety of reactions from pushback to different strategies that people had, so.
Yeah.
I think it would be important, because eventually it's going to come to the council and the council's going to have to vote on something.
Yeah.
To make sure in this forum that we get a detailed briefing of the law, how the law works, and a little bit of some of the strategies that some of the other municipalities have used for compliance, a little bit about what the process is going to be so people want to listen and.
Yeah.
Get into more and more and more detail, points in the process when it's going to come back to the council for, say, quarterly or semi-annually, whatever your thoughts are on that.
Yeah.
But program design, I think, is going to be very important because I haven't seen, well, there probably are towns where it all went hunky-dory and they didn't make the paper, but there've been enough of.
Yeah.
Reports in the paper, wide variety of different kinds of municipalities that I would expect we're going to get a lot of citizen input.
Yeah.
And I just want to sort of, A, thanks for getting this on the radar screen, but B, I think this council needs to push to do more here and more broadly and have a really solid outreach program.
Sure.
And I know you've got limited capacity to do that, but we need to figure out how to get the resources.
Oh, no, we'll get it out, yeah.
Get that done.
Yeah, some communities have passed it, but then there's some that haven't, you know, so, yeah.
So in housing, I think that's good. Can I just go through or you want me to?
No, keep going.
Okay. So I noticed on the town council president's remarks that the RFI has been released.
Yes.
Okay. I haven't seen that on the town website.
Should be there, I'll double check.
I haven't seen it. Did it get advertised in the, like, the Globe?
I didn't do the Globe. I think we did the transcript and then we were farming it out to the list of people that I knew had requested it and wanted it, so.
Okay, so not the central register?
Oh, it went on all that, yeah, Conbi, central register.
Do we have a list of outreach? I mean, did, so this is developers you knew, but developers that might be interested that wouldn't know, how would they find out about this?
Well, Conbi, central register, a lot of them monitor that, but we're going to, you know, have we reached out through the website, central register, I mean, you know, and phone calls.
Wasn't on the website.
And network.
And I haven't seen it in the central register.
It should be in the central register, so double check, but I'll.
I think, you know, you sent out with something you called an RFI.
Yeah.
And I assume what you sent to us on December 7th in the email is largely what went out?
Yeah, with the plan, the site plan and everything, yeah.
Well, it's not a, it's not an RFI, it's an RFP. So we should be clear, this council, the previous council, had asked for an RFI as a first step.
Yep.
What an RFI does is does not ask for proposals. What an RFI does is raises a series of questions that enable the town to more fully develop an RFP and consider how the market is reacting. That is not what we put out. What we put out in that document is an RFP because it does ask for proposals and it says, once you have the proposal, then you can't adjust the proposal and we can award based upon that. So it is 180 degrees opposite of what the previous council had talked about and had requested and calling it an RFI is a disservice. Okay, number one. Number two, we say that only 151 Pauline Street is there and we talk about the potential for another selection process for housing at one end of the site. That's a concept that's never been described before, that we would have a strategy of separate RFPs. We don't talk about the dimensions for that property, so there's no way for the bidder to understand what land they're actually working on.
Mm-hmm.
Because we don't know what land is being taken away from them because of this other process. We haven't heard the rationale for that process. There is no discussion over a topic that keeps coming back to this council over and over again in public comment, and that is that the land is compromised with respect to Article 97, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
So there is no title research that was part of the documentation. There is no way for a developer to fully understand what we actually can award, can't award, what needs legislative approval, doesn't need legislative approval. The zoning is wrong in the document. There is no mention of the overlay zoning that council in four years ago, apparent, I guess is the right year, I'm thinking about the year, past. So the zoning is wrong and therefore gives the wrong intent there. We mention all sorts of things. We don't mention the concept of housing at all, and yet we say we're open to all ideas, but we talk about skating rinks, hotels, skating rinks, hotels, skating rinks, hotels, but we're open to all ideas, but we don't talk about housing. We have a reality in this town, and I think you said the number, 880 units in the MBTA housing.
Yeah, ballpark, yeah.
Roughly 880 units. We've got to find a place to accommodate 880 units. We're about to embark on that area. I don't think we have the luxury of yet saying, maybe at some point we will, when the analysis is done, to say, we're not going to do housing here, not going to do housing there, and push all that housing into the neighborhoods and find the neighborhoods are reacting to us in an extraordinarily negative way. I don't know what the right solution is, but until and unless we figure out allocation of housing around this town to be compliant with the MBTA law, you can't take a major parcel like this and say, we're not going to do any housing here. Reason that there's been an objection to housing is because apparently some of us worried about the impact on the schools, right? And that's a legitimate impact, but if you're going to have, accommodate 880 units, you're going to have this impact anywhere. So the question is, where's the best strategic location for housing? Again, I don't know the answer to that, but I do know you can't shut this place out on a housing perspective.
Yeah.
Yet, okay? Maybe we can downstream. I've got, I can consume the next hour of questioning things that are in the RFI. I've got them all here.
Sure.
I really do think that it should be recalled. I don't think that getting a proposal in from there is going to pass the smell test with this council. I think it's going to end up, whatever proposal emerges as the favorite is probably going to be rejected and we're going to have egg on our face all over again. Okay? This is not a way to conduct business. It's an RFP, not an RFI. You have mischaracterized that to us. It has the wrong information across the board and a wide variety of things. It's unacceptable and unprofessional face for us to put forward to the development community, and we did not do adequate outreach as well to the development world, okay? So other than that, it's fine, but my strong recommendation as an individual counselor is withdraw it, bring it back, get reaction, let's develop a proper RFI, let's get the community input after the RFI inputs come back. Do that to inform what we're going to do for an RFP. Allow the MBTA housing process to catch up and understand what we need to do there or don't need to do there and have a real development strategy for that. Happy to talk about it or I can go on to my next issue, it's up to you.
Feel free to go on to the next issue.
Okay. So just, as you know, this councilor will not accept any proposal from this flawed process.
No.
Here. And I'm going to ask my fellow councilors to think about this seriously. Next topic, are we also going to have at the next meeting the presentation of the capital backlog? You had mentioned at the fall forum that it was trending to about a $200 million capital liability that we had in this town, but that you didn't have all the reports in, but you thought you'd have all the reports in by the end of the year, which was a couple of days ago.
Yeah.
Can we get a presentation at the next meeting of a robust presentation of?
I'll work with the council president if he wants to put it on the agenda.
That would be helpful because I think as we look at 200-plus, and I understand from a lot of people from who pay attention to the schools, that there's a two and a half override likely coming our way. I think before we can make any decisions about any major expenditure around infrastructure in this town, we've talked about this for over a year and a half, we need to have a holistic sense.
Mm-hmm.
Of what's broken, what needs to be fixed, we need to prioritize them, we need to have strategies for various components of that, and it needs to be done in a rational way. So to think that today we can go back out to the voters to ask for X in the absence of talking about the broader picture, about how everything fits together, because don't forget, if we go with a proposition two and a half override this fall and we try to do a firehouse this fall, that is likely, if they vote pass, okay, I'm not passing judgment on whether they would pass or not, that's likely it in terms of self-generating revenue for a long time. So those better be the priorities of this town that are going to really lock up and limit the ability to deal with these other problems as well. So before we can prioritize anything, I think we need to look at the entire financial picture for capital liabilities plus the school override concept. I don't think you can separate them, and I think that that is going to go on a fast, fast track. Somewhat related to that, I think this council, since there's a lot of new members, needs to be walked through the free cash situation. Remember, we've got the free cash certification in December.
Mm-hmm.
Talk about where the past practices are, talk about what flexibility we have, because we are running into a cycle that a lot of other towns are running into, which is that the COVID aid from the state and federal governments is wearing off and is going to be more financial distress. So it might be that past practices are not adequate and we need to sort of think about that and we need to think about the budgetary making process. In addition to that, while it's not a giant amount of money, it's a sizable amount of money. We got $130,000 from the Commonwealth for the, from the fair share amendment that was passed by the voters.
Mm-hmm.
And we need to talk about how we're going to dispose of those dollars in a rational way. You know, we had a thing, I'm all for opening up the skating rink, okay? But to the skating rink, we're told is, and I'm not just picking on the skating rink, we have a lot of these, what do we call these special?
Enterprise funds.
Enterprise funds. But the skating rink, like some of these other enterprise funds, these are self-perpetuating financially. And yet we found that last year they were surprised that they had a water bill, even though they make ice, which is like astounding to me, so we gave them $40,000 in the budget of taxpayer money so that they didn't have to raise rates. We didn't get any analysis of sensitivity analysis on what would it have taken in terms of raising fees to cover that $40,000. Now we're coming back with another, whatever this number was earlier today.
$40,000.
On free cash. Again.
Retained earnings, not free cash.
Counselor, that's not free cash.
Retained earnings.
It's retained earnings from the enterprise fund, not from the town.
So we need to have a comprehensive discussion about how all these things work. I think this council needs to be brought up to speed on all those, on all those items, and I would hope that that could happen at the next meeting as well. Last thing I'll talk about is a couple of transportation items. Number one, thank you. So I do, I'd like to say good, positive things. The speed signs are up and around town.
Yeah.
And I think, I think that's terrific. I know you worked on.
Rachel Kelly, yeah, I did a lot of work on that, yeah, along with the DPW.
So, so, those are, those are great. Would like to get a briefing on a couple of other transportation items and precisely where they are and how quickly they're going to move. Two of them in particular, one was a, the TSAC recommended to do a study of the intersection of Washington and Pleasant and Winthrop Street, and I've gotten more complaints from people about, is that study happening, not happening, because it's very difficult to cross the road and traffic is running around a little bit crazy around that intersection. And then the other one is precisely where are we on the Belle Isle Bridge to McGee's Corner, search for dollars to get a preliminary design going and do some alternatives analysis so we can look at that entrance to Winthrop through that first intersection in particular, which is problematic. So those are my list for today. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Munson.
I promise I won't do that, but I do applaud Joe's comprehensiveness and, and I wish, and I second some of the notions. I preferred, I would have preferred an RFI that would have gotten all proposals out for all the various ideas out. At this point, it's literally 16 days away from when the proposals are due, so I would be fine if you were to collect them and see what they came up with, but I just want to make sure that when we talk about the MBTA, that you, there's going to be a pretty huge pushback when you're asking the town to create zoning for 880 more units. So I think it's important to, to make sure that's not 880 units being built, that's just zoning for it, because that, and, and I just would be curious about how the, how you're going about getting to that number. What kind of process are you using to try to find the opportunities for more units being zoned? Is it looking at what's not dense or where, where there's some opportunity for more development without impacting what is already highly trafficked? Or I'm just curious how you and Rachel are going about it, if there's some kind of best practices or suggestions?
There is, and there's a whole report that'll, I mean, I don't get into all of it, but there'll be a report presented and it talks about all of that, you know, the neighborhoods that were looked at, the areas, they've ranked, you know, three or four different areas. I mean, we have the ability to generate more than 800 units, but they focused in on that 800 that we have to do and highlighted two or three different areas for the, you know, council to consider, so.
So do you feel as though we can get to 880?
Oh, yeah.
Comfortably?
Yep.
And then, we need to do that by when?
December, this time next year, you know, December 2024, so we have a year.
So would it be fair to say that we should get the zoning done before we get the firehouse and the, and the old middle school problems underway? Or do you think that there's, the timing needs to be, and, and what do you think the timing should be?
Well, it depends. You'll see when the report comes, there's a recommendation to put the MBTA zoning in a certain spot, it's not the old middle school site, so when that comes in, you, the council will have to decide if that's what they like or not like, and, and certainly that'll be the council's decision to decide if, you know, that's what they want to put it, or zone for it.
Councilor Swob.
Hi.
Hi.
There's a lot I don't know, but I do, I do think what Joe said, if I could kind of get an overview of all of this entire, of this big bundle of stuff, and I think that's, that's going to be very helpful for us who are new, if we could understand the enormity of what we face. Because I do think too that the community has to be engaged in this and we have to go, that process has to be organized in a way that's going to work for us. And I was a big advocate for the firehouse. I, I, I had, I mean, I tried to work on it, but it was, it was too late by the time I got into it. And I think that's what, I think this community is all for a firehouse, at least that's what I've heard, and I heard your reports, I've heard other people talk about that. It wasn't that, it's just that they didn't think they had a say in it. So before we go out and do anything else piecemeal way, I think we, I, I mean, I think I have to understand it. So as an example, is there someplace I can read about the law in terms of the transportation thing? If you just, just text me where.
Sure, I can send it out. Yeah, I can send you the info, yeah.
Because, because I also have heard what would happen if we didn't do it, and so the pieces that I have were, were maybe not right, but they were grants that I didn't even know that we would ever get. So I don't know what the actual repercussions would be, but it's, it's that way about every single thing right now that we're talking about, so I'm a little bit.
Right.
I know you're underwhelmed by my comment, but.
No, no.
I'm overwhelmed.
I get it, yeah.
By the lack of information that I have.
It's a big learning curve.
So I will, I won't read anything you said.
Sure.
Councilor Tassinari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Town manager Marino, thank you for the work you've been doing to gather all this stuff and present it to us in a digestible way, and thanks for providing the stability that the council president mentioned in his speech. I only have one question for tonight. Are we going to return to the hybrid format for town council meetings? Is that in our plan, like to do a return to Zoom or another webinar service?
I have to be the council president's.
That's president, yes. I, I mean, our plan is to go back to Zoom with some, with not a audio in terms of asking questions. The questions would come in, would be submitted through an email process.
Or the chat feature, yeah.
A chat feature, correct. But we do anticipate having Zoom come back with that capability. Do we have a target date for that? We do not. I would assume what would be in the next one or two meetings.
Next one.
It's really not, yeah, it's really, shouldn't be that much of an issue.
There is the ability to have more control or.
Yes. Yep. Set it up as a webinar, you talk about that, yeah, in other ways, yeah. Yeah, it was an unfortunate incident for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
CDICR, I do not.
Ah, yeah, they met. They kept talking about having a member here, I don't see anybody here tonight, but they will have, planning on having a members come to the meeting. They've got some resignations and some new people coming on, and I think there's some appointments they're trying to get on board. You know, they, they had a good discussion about the incident, the rabbi was there, talked about how they could work together in the future, you know, things that they, you know, would have said differently in their statement, things that, you know, the rabbi would like to see. So it was a good, good conversation, good dialogue and more to follow on that, but they do have a few concerns, and we have talked to you briefly about that, of as far as appointments go, and some people that want to get on and, you know, trying to do that in the next few meetings if we can, so the people that are interested, they can, you know, replace the bodies that they've lost to resignation, so.
Denise, do we have any new?
I did just get one in last week.
Okay. All right.
Just, just going back on a couple of things, we have not discussed the two and a half override at the council. Many cities and towns are looking at pretty bad financial situations because of the way they spent COVID money, using it for reoccurring expenses. Superintendent and the town side, I think did a remarkable job in our use of COVID funds, and I applaud them for that. As in every year, we're going to look at the budget in depth. I encourage councilors to go to meetings, because it's important, you can't just learn about it, go into one or two meetings, you should participate in a lot of those citizens' finance and finance commission meetings. It, it's definitely a learning process for old and new councilors to get involved in the nitty-gritty of the budget. It's not easy, it's a $70 million budget. There's a lot involved with it, financial in terms of free cash. We have a policy that we just changed not too long ago where we're trying to put more money towards capital, which we can always look at, different options and see if that, if there's a need for that. You know, in terms of the RFI, it was literally an RFI, it came basically from another town's It's been eight years. This council might not 100% agree on how we're going forward, but we're trying to get something moving. I personally, Councilor Aiello gave his personal opinion, I am personally not in favor of putting a bunch of units down there. I think the density of this town is bad enough as it is, but we will look and see. I mean, it, it doesn't hurt to get ideas and to look and you spitball them, and if you don't like it, you throw it away, but at least you could, you know, we're still talking about things from eight years ago that we still haven't put to bed and probably more than half of them we could put to bed one way or the other. And we are asking and we have asked, and I mentioned it, Kessel and Booze to come back with a alternatives, which includes the middle school site, because that obviously seemed to be something, in, in terms of speaking of public safety now, that seemed to be something that was a, a big question from people when we just went through this process. It was, you know, so we're going to do that due diligence and make sure we get the answers. And again, we make the decisions, they make the ultimate decision, the citizens. The nine of us could say anything we want, we could say anything individually. Ultimately, the citizens of this town decide how and where their money will be spent, so we will give them the options as best we can and move on. Thank you, town manager. Going on to old business. There is a motion, which the lighting here is not that great for me, as my old eyes. And it's moved that the town council appropriate from retained earnings in the Rink Enterprise Fund, the amount of $40,000 for extraordinary repair and maintenance for the mechanical equipment at the ice rink or take any other action relative there, too. The ice rink retained earning balance right now, the enterprise fund, the Rink Enterprise Fund, is a retained earnings of $121,500. This would, if this was passed, this would put that number at eighty-one thousand five oh six, and, you know, just a little background on that, the, the Rink has, for many years, did not have positive retained earnings at all. I mean, the goal of an enterprise fund is to maintain itself, right? And we've been fortunate enough, under some incredibly good management, to get back in the plus, and, and, you know, extraordinary maintenance comes up with every facility we have in town, the schools, the town, the libraries, they all go through repairs, and, you know, as I mentioned in my statements earlier, we have some of the best department heads, I think, as any town has, and one of the leaders in that department is, is Mr. Demento, and I don't think you could have a better leader in terms of finance, in terms of running that business like it's his home, and tracking every kilowatt hour of electricity used and everything else, so. So this is a motion. Is there someone who would make this motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counsel DeMarco, is there a second to this motion? A second by Counsel Belcher for discussion, opened for discussion. Seeing, yes, Counsel Munson.
Thank you. This is not a reoccurring?
No, this is an expense that, you know, you open up, we do not have a, a facility that's open twelve months out of the year, we close it in the spring, we open it in the fall. When you open it, you go through, we have people come in, they go through pressure checks, see if there's leaks and such, and that's when you're going to have some repairs that go on. Some years it might be five or 10 grand, that's just in the budget, some years it's a little bit more. And this year they had two freon leaks that ended up in almost fifteen thousand dollars worth of freon, and then a couple of pieces of, one of the compressors went, and then a motor somewhere else, so, yeah, it's extraordinary, it's not a reoccurring expense.
That's fine.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Fisillo. Counsel Munson.
Yes.
Counsel Belcher.
Yes.
Counsel Swob.
Yes.
Counsel Aiello.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Testaneri.
Yes.
President Littieri.
Thank you for that promotion. Not sure if I wanted that. Yes.
Thank you.
New business. Every year, we have a, per the charter, we have an election for a council vice president. Terms of becoming president, if something was to happen to him or her, the vice president would take over, but, you know, we thank, and, and he's in the audience now, past counselor, past council vice president, Rogero, was vice president for two years, and we thank him for his service in that role. We will now open it up for nominations. Counsel DeMarco.
I would like to nominate Counsel Belcher. Counsel Belcher has been on the council for two years. In addition to being my friend, she is a proven leader, hard worker, and I think her attention to detail and process will be an asset in that role.
Thank you. So there is a nomination for Counsel Belcher, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Aiello. Is there any other nominations?
Move nominations be closed?
Nominations are closed. All right, we have a nomination on the floor for Counsel Belcher to be vice president. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Congratulations, Vice President Belcher. Point Town Council Subcommittee, I apologize with the holidays, I'm a little behind on that, we will have appointments at our next meeting on the sixteenth, I believe.
Yes, yep.
The appointment of Casa, do we have that? Well.
No.
We have an appointment to the Casa Board, which in the, I'm sorry?
Capic.
Capic, I'm sorry. My eyes are definitely going.
No, it's me.
No, it does say Casa, too.
It's me.
We have an appointment to the Capic Board. In the past, our appointment has been Counsel Rogero, who did an amazing job there, and he was very much appreciated by the capitol staff. And I would like to place and name a nomination, Vice President Belcher, just put a little bit more on her plate. Is there a second to that nomination? Second by Counsel DeMarco, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Congratulations once again. Second round of public comment. Going once, going twice. Public relation and upcoming events, we are, as we have noted, we have several board committees. I believe now we have an opening on the licensing board, now that Counsel DeRoz has upped his game a little bit now, I know it's not on the council, but it's a very important position, it's a tremendous amount of work. We thank him for his efforts on the licensing board and look for new appointments. We also have a couple of new appointments just recently coming up for the CDICR, so I encourage people to take a look at the website and also contact the town clerk for more information. I would also just like to mention International Night, and we'll mention it at our next meeting. You know, Anita Preble runs this event for the schools, and she does an incredible job year in and year out. This will be held on Thursday, January twenty, uh, January eighteenth, Thursday, January eighteenth, at the old middle school gym, and it will be from six to seven thirty, so I encourage you to go to the school website, there is much more information available there, but it is a fantastic night, and I thank Anita for all the work and effort she puts into that. Counsel DeMarco, do you have anything?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Counsel Munson.
I have two pieces of information. This Saturday, we are, we being the Zenith Lodge of the Odd Fellows, one ninety-sixth Winter Street, are having a veterans appreciation lunch Saturday at noon, so if you could spread the word to any veterans you may know. Non-veterans are also welcome. There will be stories being told, short stories by some of the vets there, about some of their time in service, so it should be an enlightening experience. The other bit of information I want to share was that we, being the Zenith Lodge and the Beacon Framing Business, is now offering donations to the Winthrop Food Pantry, Monday through Friday, ten to five, so at any time during the business hours of the week, you can come on in and drop off food, and we will get it to the Winthrop Food Pantry. Just spoke to Sheila Bassett today and confirmed that, so that's it for me.
Thank you, Counsel. Vice President Belcher.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Counsel Swob. Counsel Aiello.
Just a reminder that this Saturday is the third year anniversary of the insurrection against the United States, and I will pivot off of some important words that the town council president said on his acceptance of, of being town council president again, that the kind of work that happens at this town, which is incredible volunteerism and people investing in the community, is absolutely the kinds of things we need to see across this country, so we can continue to enjoy the benefits of this country and continue to cherish what it presents for us, unique in the world and very, very lucky in the world. So spend some time on this Saturday to reflect, and we should all accelerate the kinds of things we do to strengthen our communities.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Testaneri.
All right.
No, I'm sorry.
Not.
Counsel DeRoz.
Just a quick shout out to the gentleman sitting in the stands, former Vice President Rogero. It'll be my honor to try to do my best to fill the big shoes in Precinct Six that you have left. I, I know where to find you, I know your number, so prepare for lots of clueless questions coming your way. And similarly, I wanted to thank members of the, of the council and Town Manager Marino, as well as my friend sitting to my right here. Anyone who's run for office for the first time, town counselor otherwise, usually has a lot of clueless questions along the way during a campaign, I had plenty. Counsel Honan in the office, in the audience, also a recipient of lots of clueless questions, so thank you in advance, and as Suzanne said earlier, it's a learning curve, so we're looking forward to it, and it's an honor to serve, so thank you.
Yes. Counsel Swob.
I, I know, now that I heard, I feel really bad, Barbara. You've done so much for me, and, and thank you so much, and I'm hoping that I, too, can fill those shoes, and I'm thankful for reminding you that I should have thanked her, too, and Tracy, and both of you. You, you always say things like, you know, if you have a question, just ask. Well, I have had all the questions, and, and you've always been willing to answer, and the rest of you on the council, too, that have been here for a long time, so thank you so much.
Thank you all. See a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Vice President Belcher, second by Counsel Munson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.